One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Farmington School Board meeting for Monday, March 7th. Is there any public participation? No? You do? Okay, can you go up to the mic?
Hi. Well, they can hear you on TV at home. So if you could just state your name and...
Sure. Hi, my name's Maye Cartier. And my question is, I just had a question about the football, head football coaches' position being posted. I don't know if this is the time to ask, but I was just, I believe that the coach was not asked back or something to that effect. And I just had a question about why that was and who made that decision.
I can answer that if you want. There was a nomination that was made. And it was brought to the board and the school board had the final decision on that. And we voted unanimously to move in a different direction.
Okay, and the nomination was brought to the school board by whom?
By Mr. Gezokas and Mr. Pfeifer.
Okay. To not bring the coaches back, is that...
No, we nominated the individual. Which we have to do so that they can act on it. And it's the board's right to act on any nomination.
I don't even think we, you know, we just decided to go in a different direction and to post the position.
Okay, great.
Well, the name was nominated, there was no...
Vote.
There was no motion to accept or second, so there was no vote.
Okay, and so you're saying you nominated a different person or you nominated to post the position?
No, we just, because there was no motion to accept the nomination and no second, there was no vote, so it goes out to be posted.
And that decision was just based on, so I guess I'm asking, what was the decision to do so based on?
We just thought we, the consensus was that we wanted to move in a different direction and put this position out to see what other applicants there might be out there for this particular position.
But there was nothing, there was no founding or reason that you did that?
It's really kind of, I don't think we're really at liberty to say what...
Are your minutes public?
It's a personnel matter.
Okay, so are your minutes public concerning that?
They're non-public minutes, but you can request them.
Okay, great. And, but, and again, so if the public or the parents who participated in the program supported the coach, if people are, are there people on the school board who are, have children who participate in the program?
No, but there are people on the board that listen to parents and other community members and other, and community members from other communities that have given input on this particular position.
Okay, and are those things in your minutes?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Every position comes before us every year.
No, and I was just asking, right, why the decision was made, especially if people hadn't reached out to parents in general who may have been happy with the program, so that was my question, great. And who do I speak to about requesting the minutes?
Yes.
You can call our office or my line at 755-8211.
If you could write that down for me, that would be great, and your name?
It's also, you can also go to the website and you can, no, but you can find all the information on the SAU website, telephone numbers, board emails, so that if you had any additional questions, all the information is there.
Great, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Right, they're not posted on the website, though, non-public.
No, but like the phone number to the SAU is on the, is on the website.
No, there's a different question.
Should be.
Once, once we approve them, they can be, they can go on.
Right, well, we, I don't think we've ever...
But we don't put non-public minutes, I don't know why. We only put public.
No, because the reason we don't do nominations in public is because if we talk about somebody...
Well, we, yes, but what Penny thought I was saying is that the minutes are on the website, but that's not what I was saying.
That's correct.
But as long as they're not sealed, once they're approved, they should be...
Right, she can get them because we didn't seal them.
Well, we should put those on the website also.
Well, that's a board decision that can be brought up at any time. Any other public participation?
No.
Yes? No?
I think we're on the agenda.
Yes, okay. So, moving on to minutes of February 4th, 2014, public session. Do I hear a motion? Motion to approve by Penny, second. By Joe. Any...
In the, I don't know if this is the right one, the one from the special education presentation?
Well, that was, that's not February 4th.
Gotcha, okay, sorry, I'll wait.
Okay, hearing no discussion, I'll call for a vote, all in favor of approving the minutes?
I just have one, it's not, doesn't say who took the minutes on this one.
Oh, it doesn't, does it? It doesn't say on the non-public either.
I'll add that, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so, any other discussion on those? Okay, all hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor of approving the public minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, non-public session one, February 4th. Motion by Joel, second by Penny. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. February 4th, oh, excuse me, non-public session two. Motion by Penny, second by Joel. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? February 4th, 2016, non-public session three. Motion by Penny. Second by Kathy. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor? Aye, opposed. Okay, February 15th, public session, Diana, I think this is where you have your...
Yeah, page three.
Okay, hold on one second, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Joe, second by Stan. Discussion, Diana?
Page three, third sentence down, coordinators should be teachers.
Anything else?
And then on page four. I'm having it on the device, I can't make those pages on mine. Page four, coordinators should also be teachers. What was your other one, I'm sorry? It was on page four, where, the second paragraph where it mentions coordinators, it should be teachers.
Any other discussion? Diana, you good?
I think I have something on page eight, I just, I wrote myself a note here. Page 111. It said that I sent an email, it was actually Matt up there that sent the email.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The, next to the last paragraph.
Oh, got it.
Sorry.
Anything else? Okay, hearing no more discussion, I'll call for a vote, all in favor of approving the February 16th, public session minutes?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, minutes from the non-public session one from February 15th. Motion by Joel, second by Penny. Discussion? No? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, February 15th, non-public session two. Do I hear a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Joe, second by Penny. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor? Opposed? You're not?
I said, do we want to consider sealing those?
I thought about that, but then I looked at it, I'm like, I don't know, I don't know. I mean, people know. Do you want to, we can...
Do you want a motion to seal them and discuss it in public and we can always unseal them when we come out?
No, I think it's vague enough, I guess.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so did we...
Have those?
I don't think so.
Okay, so, all in favor of approving those?
Aye.
All right. February 17th, public session. Did everybody have those? Yep. Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Oh. We might have already done that, Joel. We did.
What?
If you read, if you read the minutes, it says that February 15th, 2000...
Oh, we did seal them.
We did seal them.
So those should be sealed.
So these are sealed. I thought it was one, but it is two. Okay, so, any discussion on the public minutes from the 17th? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor? Opposed?
Sorry, aye. I need a favor, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. All right, so we have these two, I have them right here, sealed. Do you want to...
I have one copy, they're brief, if anybody wants to take a look at them and... Just lay them on there.
There's two different ones.
So just swap.
So that's session one and session two. And then Joel.
These are the same?
No, they're different. Oh, he hasn't seen them. For minutes, I don't think I've ever been...
Okay, so do I hear a motion to approve the non-public session one sealed minutes for February 17th, 2016? Motion by Penny, second by Joe, all in favor? Opposed? Do I hear a motion to approve the February 17th, non-public session two sealed minutes? Motion by Joe, second by Stan. All in favor? Opposed? Okay. So, new business, FHS student presentation for social change project.
I'd like to introduce you to Ms. Kathleen Lines, who is one of our English teachers, and she can give you a quick overview of the project and also introduce our guest speaker for tonight, and I'll hand out some paperwork.
Thank you. Thanks for having us tonight. As Matt said, my name's Kathy Lines, used to be Malcolm. And I had a, I teach in the English department here at the high school, all levels. And last semester was a, we had a class together, this is Ms. Emily Hardsley, an A student. And in my college prep, psychology and English class, we had as an assignment, I assigned a social, plan for social change to the students. And each student had to come up with some kind of a plan or a proposal for positive social change, either in the town of Farmington or in the school. And we had quite a number of really good presentations. If you look at the back wall, this was a drive, book drive, read and share an adventure that, that a freshman student actually put into action. Students got extra credit and bonus points for actually enacting their social change plan. And Ms. Hardsley came up with a community garden proposal. So Mr. Gezokas has passed out a copy of her proposal, which she is going to basically summarize for you, and you can read that at your own leisure. But she definitely put some thought into this, and she is a fine example of Farmington students and what positive things that we can do here. Thanks very much, folks.
I would like to propose the idea of a community garden out in the courtyard next to the cafeteria. I think it would be a good spot, it gets plenty of sunlight during the day.
Excuse me, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
That's, that's, that's a big voice, I believe, down there.
No.
Well, that's not going to do it.
Why don't you come right in the middle of us and talk? Can you do that?
Give her that mic.
Yeah, just give her. Yeah, sit next to Diana and use the microphone.
This mic is for people at home.
Yeah, we want people at home to hear this because this is awesome.
So, the courtyard, I think, would be a good spot. I initially thought behind Valley View, in that strip behind the playground, but I think the courtyard would be better because it's, it's out of the way, but at the same time, it's still accessible and it gets plenty of sunlight. And having it off the courtyard would allow opportunity for compost because the cafeteria throws away a lot of food. And I think saving that and using it in the garden would be good for the soil and crops. And it would be a chance to involve the environmental science class. And I think life skills and the FAMI program would be able to use it too in their curriculums.
And even the elementary schools?
Yeah.
School?
Yeah. I think that teaching kids from a young age is important for what their food is and where it comes from and how it's grown. It just helps them be healthier later on. I think it would give the community a sense of togetherness, growing, eating and growing things that are made by another community member would bring them together.
So it would be like another resource for the community where the food pantry provides an excellent source of non-perishables. Emily's proposal is to have fresh fruits and vegetables available here and basically on an, on an honor system for any community member to come and pick some lettuce for dinner, pick some tomatoes to make a nice salad, nice fresh salad, maybe some strawberries or something like that. Of course, would be a lot of logistics that, that we have talked about with the administration. When Emily presented the first time, we had Mr. Gezokas come into the classroom, all of her classmates are on board with her. They are ready and willing to volunteer their time. That was a class of over 20 students, but then we have other students and educators here who are interested in this program and who are supporting it 100 percent. The administration, of course, has agreed, and that's why we're here tonight, to get approval from the school board, hopefully to make some strides in making this happen.
Anything else?
I think the board might have some questions for you if you get my attention. Okay. I don't know if it's my question so much for her, as logistically, strangers on campus is usually a big deal. When would the community garden be available to people, I mean...
That's what I was thinking, on the reverse side, we talked about maybe having community hours...
Right.
After school, so it's not a distraction to classes in progress. And, and it's not a, any kind of threatening type situation, having strangers coming in, but though it's a small community and most people know most people, we wouldn't want to put anyone in jeopardy. We would have donations for raised beds from local, like Cameron's, for example. People who are in support of this, my husband, Mr. Lines, he teaches at Barrington Middle School, as you know, and he teaches woodworking, he used to teach at Farmington High School. He's willing to put together raised beds for us on his own time. I've got another, a guidance counselor here, Mr. Pelletier, who's willing to donate wood for that. So I think it truly will become a community project as Emily envisioned. And with possibilities for the future of having like phase two of a greenhouse being built. And, you know, all the curriculum possibilities that are, you know, that stem from having something like this, they're just endless and they're all healthy and they're all positive. So, you know, we would be looking for donations, have a real committee put together so that everything is, is done and we're really hitting our bases in terms of the questions that you folks are going to have.
Anybody else have some questions?
I do, Emily. So you mentioned here that, you know, FAMI may have a role during the summer in kind of overseeing it. Is that something that you talked to Dean about yet, or is that something that you want to talk to him about?
I will definitely talk to him about that. He already seems to be pretty excited about the idea.
It's a good idea, because I wondered, it's like, well, the summer is really going, you know, some action out there. Who's going to sort of oversee that? That's a good idea.
Community members that enjoy gardening, they're certainly welcome to come and weed out weeds and plant what they wish.
No pun intended.
So she came up with this kind of logo cultivating our community, and that was another element of the assignment. So, so she kind of made it a new to a visual thing. We could, you know, start advertising and really kind of get the word out if all approved by you folks.
I'm waiting to hear from Stan, who had the community garden here in Farmington.
I won't make any comments because obviously we tried to get the school involved and the school wasn't interested, so I'm abstaining from any comment on it.
I think it's a wonderful idea, Joe, do you have any comments or...
Proves in the pudding.
Yeah. Well, I'll make a motion that we, now, you okay this with Mr. Gezokas?
Yes.
I have, I have one more question.
I have one question.
Yeah?
Sorry.
The courtyard, we used that in the past for graduation, would that no longer be an option for graduation, for having it outside?
I figured it is a football field now, right?
We'd be looking at, if we do outside graduation, would you... What we'd like to be able to do is kind of take the next steps forward and sort of tie a lot of this together in developing the plan and making sure that the school board is on, on that onboard with this so that when Emily starts and Ms. Lines and myself, we get together, we can start putting it into action and then developing an action plan and coming back to the board with that action plan so you know what's going on and the steps that we're going to be taking and the different things that go along with that.
So you're not looking so much for approval as, as get it started and bring it back forth with the full plan? Or are you looking for approval for it tonight?
Well, before we would do anything, we would come back with the final plan for you to say, okay, this is what it's going to be, this is where we're going to start and get the final blessing of that. But we didn't want to go forward with that until we knew that there was support from you guys.
Yeah, I would support that.
Also. Does anybody have any?
So you don't, we're not looking for a formal motion to move forward with it?
I was going to make the motion to move forward and then, but if that's...
And then come back and report to the board?
And then just come back.
Is any Eagle Scouts that need an Eagle Scout project, that might be something that you might want to look into, an Eagle Scout that needs to, to do a community-based project, that might be something that they'd be interested in helping you with?
I was thinking too, you could involve UNH and you could even like, you know, just brainstorming here, but like canning and all of the, all of that stuff, you could involve the homesteading group. This is great, this is a great idea, Emily. Any, anything else?
And, can I add something else?
Yes.
I know Mrs. Tebow is right onboard with it as well, with the life skills program. And she's already started writing a grant for materials and supplies prior to this project proposal. So, she's, I think we'll probably get together with her, if we're able to, the board, and we're moving forward, and we'll start looking for extra grant funds too, to lessen the costs to any community members.
Nice job. Well, thank you.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve this community garden. That way, if, I don't know if you'll need something for that grant to say that it's been approved, but it would be in the minutes, so...
Second.
Yeah. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you, Emily.
I would just like to make one comment. We would like to make this a regular feature of your agenda, if you will allow us to have student presentations about things they're doing. I think it's very positive to reflect that our students are working hard and thinking and are responsible, and the community should know that, and that our region should know that.
Yeah.
We have good students and good kids.
We need a senior or representative from the student body. That's one thing we're missing.
It's hard, kids work and...
Yeah, but hey, it's proven, matter of fact, if you go on the DOE website, the more extracurricular activities the better they do in school.
Yeah. I agree. Okay, principal reports, who wants to go first?
I always go.
Thank you very much, appreciate you coming.
Good job. Have a good night, thank you.
Come on.
Greenhouses, fall.
Yeah.
Does she need her poster?
Oh, she'll get that tomorrow.
She'll get it later.
Good evening. I'd like to start off this evening by shut, do a few shutouts. As you know, the week prior to vaca, the week of vacation week, we do our winter carnival. And this year's theme were the Hunger Games. And special thanks goes to Jen Weeks and Katie Gray, along with the student council, for providing the leadership around the winter carnival with the wall hangings. And also to the custodians for working with the kids and decorations that go on. There's a lot of kids in the building during that week after school until the, till about seven, eight o'clock at night. But also to the advisors for being here and supporting the kids during the winter carnival pieces of it, leading up to the wall hangings and the gym. So, thanks to all those guys for their great work. Some upcoming events, on March 10th, this week, Thursday, we will have our eighth grade parent night at Farmington High School beginning at six o'clock. This would be an opportunity for the eighth grade parents to meet members of the different departments, but also for us to give an overview of the curriculum and the scheduling process that the eighth graders will begin shortly. And then shortly, early next week, our guidance departments will be heading down to Henry Wilson to work with the eighth graders and doing their course selections for the 16, 17 school year. Some professional development things coming up, Hannah Beland and Jenna Roy will be attending SMARTboard training. They will sort of become our resident experts with the understanding that they will then provide professional development, ongoing professional development for the rest of our teachers here at Farmington High School so that they can get better at... our teachers here at Farmington High School so that they can get better at working with the SMARTboards. March 17th, Mr. Pascucci, once again this year, will be taking the group to the state science fair. As you know, in years past, Farmington High School has done very well in this competition and I expect the same and similar results going into this year. The projects each year get a little bit more sophisticated. They ask me to sometimes be a judge and I get nervous because of the complexity of some of the jobs that they do. I get nervous that I have no idea what they're talking about, but we're looking forward to the curriculum fair, which will be on March 16th. It'll be open to the parents and the public beginning at three o'clock. So if you have an opportunity, pop by the gym and see all the different things the kids are doing across the curriculum. It's a good opportunity to see some of the stuff in action. We'll also have some of the younger kids coming in to take a look at what we're doing and have kids explain to them the different projects that they've done and kind of give them an overview of all the different pieces there. Last year, one of last year's highlights were the bridges, the spaghetti bridges. We'll be crushing those again using math books. The math department is participating with their bridge pieces. Last Wednesday, we attempted to have our SATs and our PSATs. Unfortunately, Mother Nature did not cooperate, so we had to postpone the SAT until April 12th. We were able to conduct the PSAT testing on Thursday and finish them up on Friday with makeups. As far as turnout, I think we had seven students that we had to make up in freshman and sophomore, so that was a pretty good turnout for that. So we're excited about the process there. We'll also be meeting with them in early May, once the results come in, so that we can sit down and work with them on those pieces. On March, this past Thursday and next Thursday, Farmington High School will engage in some conversations around the current bell schedule and trying to look at ways of increasing class time, taking a look at study halls and the effect of study halls and how good, bad, or indifferent they are, but also looking to see how we can incorporate some sort of RTI within the school day to help out some of our struggling learners. Unified basketball unfortunately exited the playoffs after the first round. However, it was a great game and a great year for them for their first year. A lot of positives came out of that. It's always fun to watch those guys in action and see the different connections that they make and so we're, they're already talking about next year and what they can do differently and so we're really excited about that. As part of that, the team along with the two coaches will be participating in the Winnie Dip in Laconia on Sunday, March 20th. It's similar to the Penguin Plunge for the Special Olympics and so what ends up happening is for each participant, they have to raise $175 each in order to participate in the dip. And so several of them have already hit that mark and beyond in terms of donations, which is great. And what ends up happening is that we have a grant right now from Special Olympics and so any money we raise above and beyond that grant money that they've given us, 30% will come back to Farmington High School. So if they all do, if all 12 of them hit their $175 mark, we should be getting some money back from them to help offset the cost of the unified basketball. So if you're interested in donating, contact Shonda Tebow and she can help you out with that. So we're looking forward to the 20th and hopefully the weather continues to cooperate. On March 14th, which is next Monday, we have four students who will be participating in the NHIA Scholar Athletes. Those four will be heading down to Concord, I believe it's 9:30 in the morning for their recognition. As you know, the Scholar Athletes are students who have maintained a high GPA average and participate in two or more varsity sports. This number is down from years past. In years past, we've had much better participation in that. The thing that's hurting us right now is students participating in more than one varsity sport. So that's why a lot of the kids who normally fall into this do not meet the requirements. So hopefully in years to come, we can get that back up and running, so.
Anybody have any questions?
I do. Who are the four students?
We have Mary Lou Shepherdson, DJ Harrison, Rachel Warren, and Derek Poole.
And the other question is, how come no winter carnival game this year for the community to sort of get involved with as like in years past, there's always been a particular game where, you know, the walls were judged by community members and things like that. Is there any particular reason why that didn't happen?
The Friday night game, the girls?
Yeah. I mean, usually there's like an attendance requirement because that particular night, the kids were saying, well, winter carnival's over.
Or they do the tug of war at the halftime or?
Yeah. And so they did the boys' previous game, they did the attendance pieces of it to try to offset that.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. And usually, we usually do the boys' game and usually that Friday, that last Friday of the pieces of it. And so the schedule changed last year and it's going to change again this year and that's what we tried to get is that Friday before vacation is the home game because of that winter carnival. So, yeah. It does help in terms of attendance and stuff like that, so.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
So I wanted to recognize a few people. We had Tammy Cook ran our jump rope for heart again this year and with the second and third graders, they have raised their highest amount yet. They raised $4,800 and they had a great turnout for parents and community members coming in and taking pictures of all the jump roping activities that they had, so they had a great Then it may have gone up a little, but that was the last count I had. I also want to recognize some members of our environmental action team. They came in on February vacation and if you come into the front of the building, they painted a mural of a tree and then we added the Seven Habits onto it afterwards and they did a great job. And thank you to the custodians for helping out with that and making sure that we didn't interfere with any of the cleaning activities or any of the things that were going on. They did a really nice job. Our painters were Rebecca Huff, Cindy Hunt, and Tom Pringle. And then Wanda Pelkey painted the signs that we placed on afterwards, so your picture doesn't have the signs just because it was time. I was trying to get it in and she came after I sent it out. So if you want to come take a look, it's beautiful. And then we also had Carrie Fredo, Pam Scaffington, and Michelle Shepherd, who came in and helped out with getting paint and helping them out with different things like that. So it really came out very nice. Mrs. Holman held our Read Across America event on March 2nd and we had a great turnout of parents and got to see Read Across Farmington and she had gone, I believe she came to some of the school board members and talked to you and we put that up on the screen for the kids to see and it was nice as you went to different things, they were like, there's the high school, there's the fire department, there's the police department. So it was nice to see the kids recognized all the community members as they went through that and they got to see that. And then as a school, we all read for five minutes and the parents brought books with them and sat down and read with us as well. So it was nice to have them participate in that. Our next celebration is March 31st at 8:15. We did also have Spirit Week the week before and PBIS put that on with Ann Titus as the chairperson. The kids had a great time with their crazy hair and their funny outfits and funky hats, so it was fun. We do have, I just talked about it today with our third grade teachers about going down to the curriculum fair at the high school here and they've gone every year, so the kids, the teachers are excited about setting that up again and getting the kids down here to see the experiments and the different things that the high school students put on. So that is something that's been added since this report came out. We just had, report cards are coming out at the beginning of April. I put in some star scores there for you. We are showing some really nice improvement with our students. And then we just had three teachers and an administrator attend the Atlas training in Maryland and they got some really good information and did some nice vertical teaming with the high school and Henry Wilson and Mrs. Sparks. So it was nice to be able to work with some other schools and with the school administrator to kind of align what we're doing with the curriculum. And that's all I have. Any questions?
I don't. Talked really fast.
Thank you.
If I could give one quick update, we're having a community presentation entitled Hide and Seek, Hide and Seek, April 12th, which will be at Henry Wilson Memorial School. It's an interactive presentation, it's for adults only, it's a staged teenager's bedroom which shows indicators and warning signs of students involved in risky behaviors. It's adults will get a chance to come in if they need childcare. We're also working on arranging childcare, having a meal so that kids can be in attendance in another location. This is for the younger guys. And then the adults can attend the presentation itself. Dinner, we're hoping will be at about 5:30. Presentation opens at six for people to inspect the bedroom and kind of look for the signs that they think they can find. And then the presentation will begin at 6:30 and run till 8:30. So these are flyers you'll be seeing around fairly shortly for the presentation coming up.
Thank you.
Hopefully by the next meeting, we will have a third principal here to be able to present to you about Henry Wilson, which we have known for a little while, so.
All right. So next on the agenda is the calendar for next year.
I'm presenting you for 16, 17, a draft calendar. The biggest difference that you may note is that the vacation period in February and April will be one week later. This is in the intent to lessen the impact on our vocational students that attend Lake Region, so they will not miss sessions at Lake Region. We have matched the Governor of Wentworth calendar correspondingly. We will be starting, we have a teacher workshop on the Monday in August and go three days and then the folks are traveling, have a long weekend for Labor Day. Other than that, it's pretty akin to this year, but there's two big changes and we're trying to lessen the impact.
My motion to accept the 2016-17 school calendar.
Second? Second by Stan.
Any discussion on the calendar?
The only thing is, you did send us the Governor of Wentworth Middleton calendar, so is it going to?
Oh, I have.
It's going to, one of my drive.
Oh, so when I printed from the drive?
My hander sent you both.
Oh, I printed one. I printed a pertinent one.
Okay.
You may have said this, I didn't, I may not have heard you, but did you have the association take a peek at it?
It has been approved by both associations. I met with both associations, reviewed it. They gave me their comments. Probably the only ringing comments we have is whether we would like to look into the brown bag process, which on weather days, we would do brown bags with the students, the faculty would monitor that. That's going to take, I think it's a great idea. Kier Sager's done it for a while. Governor Wentworth started this year. The problem becomes with powers, they still and Governor Wentworth have to make up those days in professional development, but I would like to discuss that with the administrative team, whether it would be constructive. Teachers would not have to travel, but they would have to be computer-based so students can contact them during the weather day and receive feedback on their work.
I think it's a good idea.
I think when we talked about this before, there has to be an 80% use of...
Participation?
Participation.
Yes.
Is that still?
That would be fairly accurate.
So if 80% of, and I think that's what has kept us away from it before is that not every household had a computer, but that could be different now.
We will discuss it and make a recommendation to you.
Okay. So did we vote on this calendar? Okay. Any more discussion on it? Joe looks like he wants to say something.
No.
All right. So all in favor of approving next year's calendar?
Aye.
Opposed? Wait, Roy, you're up.
Included in your packet is my memory of identifying that the district will need to go out and obtain property liability coverage as of July 1st with a new vendor. For some time, the Property Liability Trust has been working with the Bureau of Securities regulation as far as the structure of the Property Liability Trust. The Bureau of Securities at the state level has said that Property Liability Trust will have to cease as of June 30th, 2016. What that means is that if the district has any current claims pending, I mean, we still have coverage for those claims, but as of July 1st, I have to find some coverage. So in my memo report actually to you, there's about seven significant points for us to consider as we go out obtaining pricing. And I think one of the most complex and most important piece in this is that under number two, I've identified that if we are to look for insurance coverage through the commercial market, because we are a municipality, we actually, in the commercial market, we would waive our statutory immunities. And I've included the statute for you that says that, you know, in the commercial market, when you waive your immunities, I mean, basically the claims will exceed what your coverage is. Under pooled risk, everyone who's a member of the pool, they share in the risk. In summary, what I'm looking to do is obtain just a price from New Hampshire Primex. Primex is, provides our pooled risk coverage right now for workers' compensation. And so there's some other items in here that if we were to be able to obtain coverage from them, there's also some additional discounts. They provide extensive training. They will tailor training to whatever you need. They will do ergonomic assessments. They will come out and there's just a whole series of professional development at no charge that they provide to different departments in the district. So what, in summary, my memo is that asking that you waive the bid process and allow me to just go out and get a presentation from New Hampshire Primex and getting some pricing from them, obviously bringing back that information to you, the board, so that you can take action on it.
What other companies would you go out to?
Well, again, there's...
Are they just commercial?
Right. So, you know, and that's part of what I've included in this memo is that, for example, some of your commercial coverages, for example, if you needed to have a special education, administrative hearing, that's not typically part of a commercial property general liability plan. You'd need an additional rider for that. But that's part of what Primex does, is part of their pool. They're writing coverages for towns and school districts, understanding the structure of schools and municipalities. If you needed to defend yourself against the Office of Human Rights, that requires another separate rider on commercial coverage. Yes, there are commercial coverages out there, but I think that you're going to find that you've got to look at every different scenario, possible scenario, and there is, you know, you'd have to buy, you're actually going to be overbuying coverage. So at this point, this is what I'm looking for, is for you to allow me to just proceed with Primex, get their pricing, getting a presentation that I would provide back to you, so that we have also a set amount that we would know what that cost would be, you know, solid number for next year, as well as some additional programs that they offer so that you, you know, under number six, the Contribution Assurance Program, we need to know for budgeting purposes what we look like in years two and three also. Commercial lines are not going to offer you rate caps.
Additionally, usually if you buy two programs or more, you get a discount from Primex, which is advantageous. Both Primex and local governments originally stemmed from one organization, New Hampshire Insurance Trust, which was put into the market for schools and municipalities to get better rates and control the product that was being delivered to us.
I guess for me, I don't see what the harm is to putting it out to more than one place. I mean, if what it means is you have to tell them exactly what we need and I'm okay if it goes out to more than just New Hampshire Primex because there might be something else.
Because it's now what it means is we're going to be looking for insurance, which is through the New Hampshire Insurance Commission. So just keep that in mind, that you're really not looking at apples to apples. It's about a pooled risk. It's about what a district or municipality does to minimize risk in their district. Commercial lines, you just...
Anybody else? Stan?
I'll move to wait for bidding process, so we can just go to... Second.
Any more discussion on that?
Yeah, the other... Yeah, do you have any other, you want a school public company?
Yeah, I will double check with, I will double check with the interlocal trust, I've not heard, yeah, they are also pooled risk coverage. I will check with them to see if they are venturing in that area, but the last I knew they weren't, but I would certainly, under pooled risk structure, I would look at them.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Yes, definitely.
So can you structure that to say that any pooled risk?
Any pooled risk.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Because I can live with that.
All right. So any more discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Superintendent's report.
After many steps and much time, I'm proud to announce that we have hired an interim principal of the Henry Wilson Middle School. Sean Flynn will be joining us from Campbell High School in Litchfield, New Hampshire. Sean has been a mathematics teacher, department head, served on multiple committees at Campbell. He has also been a basketball coach, where his teams are known for their excellent play. Sean has over twenty-one years of experience in public education. Also joining the administrative team at Henry Wilson Middle School will be Jessica Anne Richardson from the Northwood Elementary School. Jessica has taught fourth and fifth grade and has served on numerous school committees, including the Student Discipline Committee. And finally, to meet the trifecta, we are also pleased to announce that we have hired a nurse for Henry Wilson. Katrina Muskamp will be joining us, she is an RN. She brings many years of experience in nursing in the United States and abroad. We are certainly pleased to have these three individuals join our administrative team and the Farmington School District. This is a little late now, and because the superintendent delayed school on Wednesday, we did not have the SAT as scheduled last Wednesday. We did give the PSATs, however, and this in general, and we give it again, hopefully, and we won't have a snowstorm, rainstorm, or other. We hope that this rigorous assessment will help prepare our students for either the world of work or the post-secondary school environment. We hope this assessment will help prepare them for opportunities in the field of their own choosing. High school students will also be asked to take a writing assessment of part of the SATs. That is something we're paying for and we think is important. Later in the spring, our third and eighth grade students will be taking the smarter balance, large-scale assessment in language arts, writing, and mathematics. And in May, students will take the New England Assessment in Science, in order to demonstrate their proficiency in learning in science. We continue through Larry's work and others to, on the overall safety of our buildings and working cooperatively with our community. We encourage parents and guardians to contact us if they have any questions about their children's educational programs. Tomorrow, we encourage the voters of Farmington to participate in the annual school district election, elections. We are part of a democratic society which only works if we all vote. Elections will be held at the old town hall gymnasium, and polls will be open from eight AM to seven PM. And we would appreciate any of you who do choose to vote and participate. Thank you, and I hope we move, as we move into the spring, you have time to spend, spend with your children and communicate to us about their educational needs. Finally, I would like to thank Kathy King for her service on the Farmington School Board and as chair of this group.
Thank you very much.
Actually-
I just want to add, oh, go ahead.
Do you have a question?
No, I just wanted to talk about the voting.
Okay, go ahead. Chair supervisor?
No, no candidate, but I, I'm asking people to go out and support the school budget and, and to please support the two other articles that we are looking for. Oh goodness, the parent contract and the school bus. I mean, this is important for, the parents had not had a contract in two, three years. It's really, really important, this contract is really important for us to have passed and for you to send your support to our school employees. So I just ask that you just go out and support your schools tomorrow. Thanks.
And on behalf of your fellow board members for this evening, because tomorrow we won't be fellow board members, so thank you for your support.
You're up till the end of the week.
It's been an interesting four years, and I, I had a great learning experience and tried to do the best that I could in different circumstances, but thank you, everybody. It's really nice. Thank you.
Can I ask a question to Dr. Pfeifer?
Yes.
The continued focus on overall safety, and you mentioned Larry, can you give us a little more meat, what do you mean by that? What kinds of things are you, you currently doing?
Well, we have studied our building and what maybe some of our strategic weaknesses are relative to getting into certain areas. We want to help Henry Wilson now put a clasp on the inside of the cafeteria doors, so students cannot let themselves in after hours or on weekends. We continue to study our behavior patterns to see if there are particular parts of the building that we can change our strategies in terms of covering those areas.
Anybody else have any other questions on the superintendent's report?
Ms. Larry, did I miss anything?
No.
Do you want to step up and talk about the award of bid, or is Lori doing that? For the auto scrubber?
Oh, I don't mind presenting it, and then I'll-
You should come up to her.
I mean, we worked on it, guys. Be hiding in the back.
Certainly, with Larry's recommendations, I'm looking at, there are two pieces of equipment in the district that are, I think they're probably beyond a fifteen-year life cycle, well beyond that. He's looked at the amount of money that's been put into the repairs of it to determine, you know, at what point do you stop throwing good, good money after bad. When we developed this year's budget, we do have money in his replacement equipment under the facilities piece that does actually meet this, the bid response. Larry's groundwork was that, looking at what's the best piece of equipment that's really going to be the most affordable without overbuying. We did a public bid pretty much along the eastern seaboard and sent it out to eight companies nationally. It is very specifically for a belt-driven affinity model auto scrubber. And, like I said, we did eight companies, and I'm going off of memory here as to who the eight were, Power Equipment Sales, MD Stetson, Lansing Supply, NASCO Supply, and Hilliard, New Hampshire, the cleaning resource. The other names are escaping me, and I didn't bring the file with me, but Hilliard is the one that provided a bid. Hilliard Local, the cleaning resource, at much less than their corporate office did.
Oh, that's good.
Okay? So the recommendation is, is that we purchase two new units with the, without the gel batteries. The price is five thousand six hundred ninety-six dollars each, no charge for shipping and handling, obviously no sales tax, and unlimited training. We have that in writing here. So the total for the two pieces of equipment, including the batteries, lead cell batteries, eleven thousand three hundred ninety-two dollars, and we are looking for your approval to be able to proceed with that purchase.
You said that was-
And award the bid.
Was that something that was originally in the budget?
Yes, yes, it's under, it's under his five, seven, three object code under equipment.
Okay, so I have a motion to accept, and I can, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jill.
Yeah.
Any more discussion on this?
I do. How many auto scrubbers do we have? Is it like two, two per building?
Right now, there's, there's one at Valley View, one at the high school, and one operational, one at Henry, well, one sometimes operational, one at Henry Wilson.
Okay. I just thought, and, and so we're placing the one at Henry Wilson, obviously.
And the one at Valley.
And the one at Valley View.
One at Valley View.
We're still using that one, but it's on a trade out.
Yes, I've just got, Paul Burrows would just send out a B B T to try and get them to go along.
Yeah, it's too bad that two went at once.
I know. That's how it goes. Okay, so I had a motion by Penny and second by-
Another question. Why do we particularly want this affinity model?
Because that's the one that we've been, the last one they purchased was the half of this school, and that's one of the, I won't say cheaper model, but most feasible models. The staff here has had good luck with it, and we specifically asked for that, so they can compare apples to oranges, so that we could get, we didn't have five different manufacturers sending different type products.
How long did that, the ones that broke, how long did they last?
The one at Valley View has been, yeah, since the school opened in ten thousand two, so that's fourteen years. I believe the one from the high school that went to Henry Wilson, when they purchased the new one, was, is older than that, I'm not sure what year it was purchased.
Anybody else, Joe?
Yeah, how many man-hours can you save with units?
Women's hours.
Or woman hours.
Basically, person hours.
Person hours.
It basically cuts the time in half. And not only that, but mopping the floor with my hands, after three weeks of that, the floor is, that mop marks all through, you know, spreading the dirt around, instead of picking it up and vacuuming it up, so.
Workplace injuries. Yeah, same. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are back to public participation.
Thank you for the good news, Dr. Pfeifer, on the three positions at Henry Wilson. Do you have an anticipated date that each of those individuals will start reporting?
The nurse will be here on March twenty-first. The principal may be, is here as soon as the end of next week. And I expect the assistant principal to be present in the third week of March.
Awesome, great.
We're trying to be fair to their school districts, who have to fill their positions, and from an equity standpoint and moral standpoint, I wouldn't want people ripping us off, so I think it's only fair we cooperate with them. They fill their positions, they'll release them. Both have been, their resignations have been accepted by their boards, and so it's just a matter of getting the right person. And they're trying to get here, they're going to attend some activities at the fence before then, but-
Okay, great, thank you. Madam Chairperson, the new calendar that was just approved, when does that start to get distributed, posted online, or go into print, do it, does anybody know?
Probably, I know it goes into the handbooks, but we could probably get that online, pretty much, pretty much tomorrow.
I'm not in a rush, I just wanted to know when people could expect to start seeing it. Okay, so anytime. I guess the reason why I ask that is for the future. I know we don't set the graduation day until the end of March, so if that's something that could be set, if we could look into options and set it for next year, then it could be a part of the calendar? Because I know that the unknown nature of the graduation day, and you probably all know this, is a bit of, a point of contention with lots of families.
The difficulty is weather-related days, how many days we miss. Seniors may not graduate before the hundred and seventy-fifth day of school. They do get out earlier than their counterparts, who must go a hundred and eighty, but if we extend our schedule this year, it's been, we've only missed one day, had a couple delays. So it's a guessing game. Certainly, as soon as we can make that known, you know, I look at the winter before last for this one, and there were many more snow days across the state of New Hampshire used. So if it becomes a real problem, then we can petition the commissioner for an exception, but it's really hard to predict when that hundred and seventy-fifth day is going to take place.
Sorry, I know this isn't on the agenda as a topic to discuss, but what prevents you from setting it at the last possible date for a graduation? Just so that it's a firm date and is known with the school calendar.
Well, I mean, I'd have to push it out then. I'm, we are supposed to show five weather-related dates in our calendar, so I'd have to push it out to that point, that's the outside limit. So we try to be as realistic with the seniors as we can and with the families, because, and give you as much notice, because, you know, we certainly have family and extended family coming for that activity. So we try, it's just hard. Otherwise, I'd be out the five days, and it would be more like a hundred and eighty days. But if I have the flexibility and-
We're still getting, what, eight, April, May? We're still getting eight weeks' notice, pretty much. That's, I mean, mine's graduating in June, I don't, I mean, and the other two, I mean, it was, it was, it wasn't, I didn't think it was not enough notice.
So the latest possible date it could ever be would be into July?
I don't think we have a school year in July.
We cannot go beyond June thirtieth in any calendar year. Our master agreements say that with our teachers. State law also says that, is that we cannot go into July. So if we're counting out there around the last week of June, most of us are usually applying for an exception with the Commissioner of Education, which he or she can grant.
Gotcha. Thank you, thank you for taking the time to educate me on that. And then my last question, is there an update on the health insurance for the district? No update?
No update.
Is there any sense of urgency on getting a resolution on this?
I can tell you that the email hasn't been answered from, from them, other than what they've responded to our attorney, but no.
And no meeting scheduled?
No. Thank you.
You know the reason.
I'm more versed with microphones, Tom. Hi, Samantha Cartier again, how are you? I just had a few follow-up questions. One of them, can you tell me what meeting it was that you decided to post the positions for coaches?
February fourth, I believe.
It was just approved, and it's sealed. It's sealed.
And is that the one that's sealed?
Yeah, we just sealed it. It was sealed last week, actually.
Okay, so those are the sealed ones, good. And can you tell me when you're going to start interviewing for those positions?
We have posted both of the position, and we are beginning to get resumes. I just got one this morning, which I forwarded to Matt, and once we have a body of candidates, then we will set up an interview process. We thought it might be good this time to have a board member serve on that committee, if we can, you know, as maybe a community member or a parent.
And so you're saying, once you've received a pool of applicants, that's when you'll start?
Yes.
And so you hope to have the candidate in place by the end of the school year?
I would hope it would be earlier than that, I'd really like to say by the end of April. You know, for football teams, there's ongoing physical training programs and other things, and allow that individual to set it up with the players and with the schools, and communicate that to the board in terms of their schedule. Usually, there's a summer training that is important for- Usually, there's a summer training that is important for the season. So, you know, the sooner the better that we can get on...
Agreed, yeah.
Want to be fair to the candidates, allow them to apply.
And so you said you would be putting together a committee for hiring? It would include parents in the public as well?
Right.
Okay. And who is making the choice? Who's going to be on the committee? Yourself?
I usually do not, I'm leaving Matt in charge of that. He's really responsible for the meeting supervision of that position, so I'm charging him with that responsibility. If he wants my two cents, we're both football players, so.
There you go, great. And can you tell me the other positions that were posted, that you chose to post for coaching this year?
Middle school baseball.
We're going to do some tonight, and we've done some in the past. I don't have all those with me.
Okay. I just, I looked on the SAU, and I only saw the last minutes were from October 2015, so I was trying to get some additional information.
Well, I think we did a bunch that night on the floor.
You wouldn't see those on the, yeah.
About the positions posted.
Because they're known public, oh, well, on Ed jobs, right? Say, yeah.
Right.
Are you saying Ed jobs, or on the SAU website you didn't see?
On the SAU website, the minutes in which you made decisions to post. The last minutes I saw were the 25th of October, I believe, but I could be wrong, but when I looked at the page. And then, so you're saying all the positions have been posted on Ed jobs?
Yeah, I'm looking at Ed jobs now. There's a middle school baseball coach, a head football coach, the athletic director, paraprofessional, bus drivers.
Okay, great.
No other coaching positions for the fall were posted? I don't know if you were, if you were asking that.
I was just wondering in general what the other, you know, coaching positions that were...
We're trying to, what, post them shortly after the season ends, if, and get the nominations in so that, because in the past, it's been very last minute.
Yes, I would agree.
And you don't want to be last minute.
Yes. And it has been, I think that has affected our teams greatly. And so are you going to be making decisions for the winter sports, for those coaching positions?
Those will come up later on in the spring. Right.
Okay. Well, you just said, you indicated soon after the season, and you would like to do so, the season's ended.
We do have nominations tonight for the varsity baseball and for JV baseball.
Great. Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
But we try to allow the board sufficient time to, you know, evaluate people that are working in the system, so we try to let them know.
Agreed.
At least a season ahead, if possible.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. Okay, anybody else?
Just, the minutes are up through January 19.
Evening, Stephen Henry. Speaking of minutes, a lot of the minutes lately on the website can't be printed. Can only view them online. Can we get those so we can print them too? I think it's just settings and how they're posted to the Google Drive, but if I go back, maybe, you know, to the ones that are a couple months old, they can be printed.
No, they're just when you click on them, you can't.
You can't print them off.
You can view them, but you can't print them or save them.
That's just a setting, I think.
Yeah.
I will check on that, Steve.
All right, thank you. And the calendar that was just approved, how many days in that do you end instruction early and send the kids home?
How many early release days?
Early release, so a teacher workshop.
When you tell the kids to show up, but count it as a full day, but send them home early.
Less than...
But it counts as one of your 180 days.
I don't know where I put my calendar now.
I have mine. I only see one early release day on here.
It didn't seem, it seems a lot less than, than in the past. Because what we did was, we tried to...
There's an early release in February.
And one in May.
March.
Oh, there was one in March, too.
Middle of March.
Okay. How many were there this year? I know there was eight one year.
Yeah, we're trying to cut that down based upon the way the holidays and...
The eight was a while ago.
Not as scheduled, yeah. This not.
February, March, May.
Yeah.
Threes.
Down to three?
Mm-hmm.
Still at three?
Working on it. We had them every, when I went to school, every Wednesday, early release. Every Wednesday, so.
And there were four, four teacher workshop days.
Every Wednesday. And I...
But the teacher workshop days, you're not counting the days for the students.
Undating myself.
Correct. Just giving you information you didn't ask for.
Okay, that's, thank you.
She's anticipating.
I'm trying to be prepared.
Joe?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to, once the minutes, non-public minutes are approved, to post them. Because once that's done, that's their legal, matter of fact, anybody can request them.
Once we approve them?
Once we approve them.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Okay. Any discussion on that?
I typically give them to Karen the next morning, and she tries to get them onto the website.
We're talking non-public.
Yeah, we don't do, we've had a practice of not putting the non-public out.
Because the public has a right to see them, so.
Unless they're sealed.
And the reason, and the reason we do like nominations in non-public, in case we talk about somebody inadvertently, and because they are public, that is public knowledge, but...
As long as we approve them first, then we can catch anything that...
Right, that's the motion.
Yeah. Any discussion?
Is there a possibility, well, is there a second?
Yeah, I seconded it.
Oh. I guess I'm just a little concerned that there's a possibility that non-public minutes could go up, that we, you know, in error, didn't seal.
No, this is after they're approved.
Yeah, I know, but we've gone back and sealed minutes before because someone had pointed something out that we should have sealed. So just, I guess that's my concern.
Well, once, matter of fact, it was in 96 hours, you have to...
That was 72.
I thought it was, too.
Well, 72, all right, you changed the paradigm. Doesn't make any difference. They're available out there if you don't seal them.
I get that, yeah. They're available when you request them. This would be a little different.
Well, it's still, they're out there. I mean, it's...
Okay.
Transparency.
Do you have any questions?
I'm never against transparency, but I've seen too many errors, and we could get ourselves in hot water, I think, if we...
That's where you go to pay attention.
Yeah, let's make a policy to have a process for this, so that when they go public, we know they're going public. And I think that we can solve that problem.
So what's that going to be?
We approve them first.
When we approve them, we'll have to edit them out.
So we've lived through the meeting, get a read through the minutes.
Because to me, once you're approving them...
Right.
You're, will usually catch things.
Oh, right, they won't go up as draft.
They're not going up as draft.
No, no, after, after we approve them at a meeting.
Okay, I misunderstood you.
I thought you were looking at something else other than the approval part. Like, yes, I'm like, okay, is there another?
It's in his mind.
Okay.
I misunderstood him.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Anything else from the board?
I just, I would, I know we've already, we've already thanked you, but I think it's important for the people at home to realize that, you know, you just served, what, was it, four years, I think, on the board? But this past year was extremely difficult to serve as this board's chair. And so I want to personally thank you, because I know how much work you did outside of meetings. It seemed to be non-stop at times. It was a very challenging year to serve as the chair of the Farmington School Board, and you did a good job. So thank you, Kathy.
Thank you. Okay. Do I hear a motion? Motion to go into non?
Not yet, not yet. I just want to say, this, this last six months has probably been the best this board as a group has worked together, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
You know, we don't always agree, but it's been one of the, it...
Took a little while, but we got it.
And to echo what Joel just said, you know, we've had some very difficult decisions to make, and we've made them, and we've seen it through, and your leadership has been very productive. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. All right, now we hear a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91A32ABC.
So moved.
All in favor, I will?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for coming, everyone.